Good evening. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting is improperly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2. Please note customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communication can view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002. You can also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire TV on the Go-Vegas app. The Planning Commission meeting, as well as other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web the Saturday of the meeting at 10:00 a.m., Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Cherry.
Present.
Vice Chair DeSalvio.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Toussaint.
Present.
Commissioner Roush.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. There are agendas on both sides of the podium on the pony wall there. Also, the second page of your agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of any time single speakers allowed, may be limited. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this portion of the agenda? Seeing no one, we'll move on to item number five, to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, we have some abeyance items. The applicants are requesting an abeyance to the February 26 Planning Commission meeting for items 12 through 24. This is the first request for abeyance to these items.
Thank you. And I also note, it looks like, oh, 12 through 24, all the way through. So 12 through 16 and 17 through 24. Okay, thank you. Okay, those are on for a vote to be obeyed to the February 26 meeting. Please make a motion. Yeah.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the abeyment to the following items till February 26, 2019. Item number 12, GPA 75219. Item number 13, ZON 75220. Item number 14, VAR 75221. Item number 15, VAC 75222. Item number 16, TMP 75223. Item number 17, GPA 75230. Item number 18, ZON 75231. Item number 19, VAR 75232. Item number 20, VAR 75233. Item number 21, SDR 75234. Item number 22, VAR 75236. Item 23, VAR 75237. And item number 24, SDR 75238.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries. Moving on to the one-motion-one-vote items, the following are items that may be considered in one-motion-one-vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public-hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the condition and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman. I need to abstain from item number 10. My family is in the brewery business. I also own property near this application, and so in abundance of caution, I'm going to abstain only from item number 10 on the one-motion-one-vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And a question for our city clerk. Did I miss the minutes portion? Are we going to the next meeting for a vote? There are no... Yeah, I think we're going to the next meeting to have that vote. Yeah, no problem. Okay, we're on to the one-motion-one-vote portion. I'm going to read these into the record, and we're going to have a vote. So if you could just have one second, sir. Thank you. Item number 6, GPA 75207, applicant Summit Homes of Nevada LLC. Owner, United States of America, for possible action or request for a general plan amendment from PCD to L. Located north of Mont Brule Court in Alpine Ridge Way, Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Related item 7, ZON 75208, for possible action or request for rezoning from PD to RSL. Staff recommends approval. Related item number 8, VAR 75209, for possible action or request for variance to allow a 5-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet is required, and a 6-foot tall solid screen wall in the front yard setback where a maximum of 5 feet with a 2-foot solid base is allowed. Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Related item 9, VAR 75210, for possible action or request for variance to allow cul-de-sac design which does not meet Title 1904.100 Development Standards. Ward 6, staff recommends approval. Item number 10, SUP 75227, applicant Randy Road. Owner, EAE Property LLC, for possible action or request for a special use permit for proposed 7,504 square foot beer/wine cooler on-and-off cell establishment used with 600 feet of outdoor seating in ancillary brewery at 1510 South Main Street, Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. And final item number 11, VAC 75196, applicant City of Las Vegas. Owner, City of Las Vegas, at all, for possible action on a petition to vacate a 22-foot wide portion of a 60-foot wide public drainage easement generally located on the west side of the Union Pacific Railroad right-of-way between Bonneville Avenue and Ogden Avenue, Ward 5. Staff recommends approval. I did see someone come up from member of the public. This one-motion-one-vote has a public hearing. I didn't see you during that, but if you can give your name and address for the record, and if you had something specific to these items...
Yes, my name is Gregory Nicholson with Project Design. We own a design firm that is the exact neighbor to the brewery. So we share a common wall within the structure.
Okay.
And the only concern I have is for noise, in that it's going to be a lively brewery with music, and there just simply is no soundproofing. So if I'm, you know, I don't want to be a springboard for potentially even neighbors to complain about the noise that's going to come there. I have no complaint about them moving in there. I just want it on record that I'm deeply concerned about the noise level.
I understand. Commissioner Schlotman, would you want to pull this one forward and hear it on the public hearing portion, or do you feel that the city ordinances with rules are sufficient on the noise?
Typically, noise is handled through our ordinance. I would ask the director to speak on that, but typically when I'm thinking of noise, I'm hearing noise outside, not directly from a neighbor. Does the rules apply the same as from one neighbor to the next, as it does if you're standing outside and can hear it?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, so the noise ordinance does restrict noise levels that move beyond the property. That applies to commercial as well as anything else. Additionally, I believe the gentleman had a concern about entertainment. At this time, while they are asking for outdoor seating area, I don't believe, and I'll look over to my staff, but I don't believe they've requested a nightclub license or use permit. Therefore, they would not be able to have entertainment. This would allow them to have the brew pub-type activity and on-sale alcohol, but not necessarily entertainment. Entertainment under our code requires a nightclub license or a tavern limited license, and therefore you should not see entertainment per se. That doesn't mean they can't have TVs on or play a jukebox or that kind of thing. But to the commissioner's point, they still must adhere to the city's noise ordinance.
Right. So I want it on record, because the wall's paper-thin, so we can hear conversations through the wall, and they're going to have refrigeration and kitchen right to the wall. So there's going to be a lot of activity. So if we're holding an evening, because I believe they're after 6:00 p.m., so if we hold, which we will, evening conferences for design and with designers and purchasing agents and such, that there's no question that the meeting would be drowned out. So there needs to be a soundproof wall installed. That's all I'm saying. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Well, thank you for putting it on the record. I'm going to leave it on the one-motion-one-vote at this point, and I appreciate you putting that on the record. Vice Chair, I think we are ready for a motion on the one motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of item number 6, GPA 75207.
I think we can just read all items, right?
Read all.
Six through 11.
Item number 7, ZON 75208. Item number 8, VAR 75209. Item number 9, VAR 75210. Item number 10, SUP 75227. And item number 11, VAC 75196, motion for approval.
Thank you, Vice Chair. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 6 through 9 will move on to City Council and be heard as a part of their March 6, 2019, meeting. Items 10 and 11 are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing items. Item number 25, GPA 75093, applicant owner Dr. Horton, Inc., for possible action or request for a general plan amendment to amend the trails element of the 2020 master plan and all related maps to remove the equestrian trail alignment located along the north side of La Mancha Avenue between Alpine Ridge Way and Marla Street at the northwest corner of La Mancha Avenue and Alpine Ridge Way, Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to eliminate a section of an equestrian trail alignment from the 2020 master plan trails element. Equestrian trails provide a multimodal transportation route that protects the safety of both pedestrians and riders in proximity to areas of zoning that allows for the keeping of horses. If the trail section is eliminated, the existing trail to the east along La Mancha Avenue would dead-end at Alpine Ridge Way, and a remnant section would remain west of Marla Street. Staff is recommending denial of the request.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Good evening. Liz Delk, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive here on behalf of Dr. Horton. This project is located on the corner of La Mancha and Alpine Ridge. It was before you back in August and was approved for a single-family subdivision. One of the conditions of approval was to request a GPA to remove the equestrian trail on the southern portion of our property. I've laid it out in red here where that trail is. As you can see, it runs right into the 215 there, so we do not think it'll have any negative impact. We can still go to the east and north and south. We did have a neighborhood meeting. We had three neighbors in attendance. None of them had any concerns with our request and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the commission. Commissioner DeSalvio, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yeah, I went round and round on this one, made a ton of phone calls just to confirm that, yes, it does go into the dead end, and I believe because of what they plan on doing, it is harmonious and compatible to the community. It will not have an effect to the trail. You know, in Ward 6, we tried to protect our horse-equestrian area, and this will not have a negative impact. So with that said, if there's no other comments, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Please do. There's a motion on the floor.
To approve item number 25, GPA 75093.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. And that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their meeting on March 6, 2019.
Thank you. Item number 26, WVR 75200, applicant owner Michael Eric Catmull, for possible action or request for a waiver to allow a 3-foot sideyard setback where 5 feet is required and zero parking spaces, where 4 are required for a proposed two-family dwelling at 415 North 9th Street, Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to convert a single-family residence into a duplex residence. The existing structure does not meet the required setbacks from the side and rear property line, and no parking is provided on-site. As the site is located within Area 2 of the downtown Las Vegas overlay district, these discrepancies are addressed through a waiver rather than the usual variance. As a waiver is not necessarily subject to the determinations required for a variance, however, the applicant has provided no evidence of hardship related to the site for the request, and staff is recommending denial as a self-imposed hardship.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Michael Eric Catmull. I'm the owner of Cat Mandu Properties for this project.
Okay.
Hey, how's it going?
Could you speak a little more into the microphone?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So greetings, everyone. I have actually quite a lot of evidence that I'd like to share with you guys. It's not too much. I promise not to eat up too much of your time, but the reason why I was hoping to get this approved is there are squatters inside of my property that are conducting drug business and drug dealings, in addition to leaving copious amounts of trash. This is, what's happening is, I'm suffering, sorry, suffering is a strong word. The code enforcement is coming by my property and continually charging me fines because of this trash that keeps on being built up by several different squatters that are on the property. As you can see there, it's not just trash and piles of debris, but it's also noise issues and drug use. There's a needle that was found inside of the trash. And so with this, it's creating a problem for the neighbors behind it. And so there are tenants that are paying a good amount of rent. That is a duplex that is behind this property, and there's noise issues, and there's all kinds of people coming and going transient from this. I have made several different attempts. As you can see here, if you zoom in on this, and I have the actual cards in my pocket, on 4/2 of 2018, I had the cops come out and evict five different people from this premise. Additionally, then I had them go today to try to do it, and they said that they could not do it because they didn't have enough manpower for about eight different people that were inside this house. They are illegally stealing power from Nevada Energy. I do not have power on the house. They are illegally stealing it that are inside of this house. So ultimately, what I'm trying to do is I'm just trying to get this, these plans that I have for you here, these plans finished and approved, so that I can start construction on a duplex. It's a minor amount of work. It's probably about a month of timeframe. Once that month is done, I should be able to turn it over, get my occupancy, and be able to start renting it out. Low-income rent. It's a low-income rent for the area to be consistent with the area. I'm not trying to gouge anyone. It's been a long project. I bought it in 2017. I've had several issues with it right-of-way, with the City of Las Vegas owns that property right above, as you can see if you zoom in on there. We finally got that resolved thanks to my executive assistant. We were able to get this resolved and get this changed inside of the, what is the, what is these pink lines? What is this, the parcel land? Is that fair to say? I keep making efforts. I today try to get them evicted. I am going to the constable's office, as you can see here. I have that for you. I am trying to go that route as well, but...
Okay.
That's where we're at. Good.
Thank you, Michael. If you could just give me one second. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Cherry. Mr. Catmull, I'm confused as to the item, the agenda item, versus your conversation regarding the squatters, et cetera. So that is aside from the agenda item that we are hearing.
Well, actually, all we're trying to do is, what the agenda is, is so that I can have parking spaces, because if you guys approve that...
Okay, I see that.
We're on. I can get these plans approved, and they go with construction.
Based on what I have read and based on what I have seen, I cannot approve this. As a matter of fact, I'm going to move to deny. And I'm wondering also, why hasn't this structure been torn down? Is it in compliance?
My plans are in compliance if I can get the parking spaces approved.
Yeah. Well, then, at this point, we're talking about the parking, and I can't see that taken to allow a 3-foot sideyard setback where 5 yards is required. I just can't see it, and with that, I move to deny.
Can I say one last thing before? One last thing?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, please review this. This is extremely important. These parcel lines that I showed you inside of this document, right, that shows this pre-cutout portion of land, this is the important part. If you look at this, and you look it up on your computers about it, technically where I'm pointing right here, this is my property. This is the neighbor's property. So if you motion to deny it, okay, but what do I do when I go ask that neighbor that I need to cut their whole entire sideyard out? Because that's my property.
Okay, well, that's not what this commission deals with specifically. Commissioner Schlotman, you had a comment?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of quick comments, and then I'll let Commissioner Williams speak. I'm going to make a couple of quick comments and let Commissioner Williams make her motion. I looked at this parcel because this is where Commissioner Williams and my ward kind of come to meet within this little area. You know, it's a unique house, I think, that was built back in the '40s, and so it's quite old, and I think it's kind of unique with that exterior stone. You really don't see it. And then if you look at that house right next door, and I hadn't talked to the applicant, I was just doing a little bit of research whenever I was reading through this item, because I found this little corner rather unique. It had a 642-square-foot house next door, relatively the same age, and then just the most awkward-shaped lots throughout that whole little area right there. And when I say the whole area, I'm talking about six or eight lots that butt into this one and some remnant parcels. And if you look at the shape of this lot, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 different sides to it, so it does have an irregular shape. And, you know, the pictures from a few years ago show that the windows were still there. Looks like it's boarded up just due to keeping people out. The, I mean, you're right adjacent to the right-of-way for the highway, so that didn't bother me as much. And considering that you're right next to the highway, and there's, I don't know, 50, 60, 70 feet up to the highway, there's always parking in that general little area. And I think for as long as 95 and 515s there, there's always going to be parking. So anyways, those are some of the reasons why I can support it, but I just wanted to go on the record with that.
Thank you for going on the record, Commissioner. But again, I cannot see having a duplex built and you have no parking. And with that in mind, I make a motion to deny.
Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
What does this mean?
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
So the application didn't pass, but you can appeal within 10 days if you'd like to see it go to City Council.
Okay. Who do I talk to, then?
It's the city clerk that you file it, I believe. Yeah, you can talk to staff right there. They'll direct you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 27, I will first disclose that I live within the notification area of this application. It doesn't affect me in a greater or lesser way, so I will be voting on it. It's VAR 75086, applicant DHS Signs, owner Tribuka LLC, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a proposed 47-square-foot projecting sign where 32 square feet is allowed and to extend 7 feet from the building where 6 feet is allowed at 720 South Forest Street, Ward 3. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow a projecting sign to extend 7 feet from the building where 6 feet is the maximum, and to allow the sign to be 47 square feet where 32 feet is the maximum on an existing office building. There are no impediments to visibility along South Forest Street, and staff concludes that the hardship is preferential in nature. Therefore, staff is recommend denial. Please note, there have been additional letters of support since publication. Thank you.
Yeah. How you doing? Can I get your name and address for the record?
Good evening. Maria Van den Outen, DHS Sign Company, representing the building owner.
Would you like to tell us about the application?
Yes. The building is a renovation, and this would be the only visible sign outside on the, you know, for the public to view. The reason for the additional 1-foot extension on the blade sign would be because the balcony area, if you could see that, extends beyond the building feature, so we would need to bring it out more, otherwise it would infringe upon the balcony that juts out from the building. If we were to make the sign 32 square feet, the letters on the sign itself would be so small that we would not be able to illuminate them. And basically, the application failed to mention that the sign itself has neon surrounding the border, two rows of neon, and then it's a front and back lit illuminated letter and logo. So as it stands, the letter height of the letter "O" at the 47 square feet is only 15 inches tall. So if we made it any smaller, he would not have a sign that could illuminate. So it doesn't prove hardship at all, but we're just trying to, you know, get a sign that looks nice on the side of the building, because the building is pretty big, the elevation.
Okay, thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Schlotman? Commissioner Roush, I see you. Did you want to, did you want to go? Sorry.
I was just going to make a comment, and then I'll let Commissioner Schlotman finish up, since it's his ward. I just wanted to say, I think it's a very attractive sign, and I think it's in keeping with what we're trying to see downtown. As long as it doesn't pose any type of a hardship for a bus or an impediment, you know, to street traffic, pedestrians, or anything going up and down the sidewalk, it looks like it's set back far enough in that regard to me, and I think it's appropriate and attractive for the area. I think it does help to identify the building for what it is. Otherwise, I might have mistaken the building for a residence, you know, residential condo or apartment building. So I kind of like that it has an identifier on it that says that it's office space, if that's in fact what the sign's actually going to read. But I'd be in favor of it. I think it's very attractive, and it adds to the desirability of downtown.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlotman.
If I might add, the sign does not encroach upon the public right-of-way at all.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was against this at the beginning, but then as I read it more and more, I was starting to understand it. And since it wasn't encroaching into the public right-of-way, and looking at the elevations, it looks like it's in proportion to the overall building, and you're not just trying to put a big sign there to attract people to, you know, a small, single-story building. I think it actually looks good, and fits in proportion to that building. So for those reasons, I feel that I could go ahead and support this application. So if there's no other comments on item 27, VAR 75086, a move to approve based on testimony heard tonight, subject to staff's conditions.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on March 6, 2019.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 28, VAR 75158, applicant Michael White, owner Kiss Living Trust, for possible action or request for a variance to allow 6-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet is required from existing patio enclosure at 5410 Bassett Hound Avenue, Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow a 6-foot rear yard setback where 15 is required on an existing enclosed patio structure. As no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, staff concludes that the hardship is preferential in nature. Therefore, staff is recommend denial. Please note that there have been additional letters of support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Michael White. I'm the contractor of record and applicant for this.
Okay, thank you.
I also have the owner here. He would like to make a statement.
Okay. I'll need your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, my name is Carl L. Sutton Jr., and my wife Irene Sutton. We're the owners of Kiss Truss, which owns the property at 5410 Bassett Hound Avenue, Las Vegas, 89131.
Thank you, Carl.
Yes, when we originally bought the house from the builder, it was built with the porch at all. the porch at all. When we sold the house, we purchased it, it had the porch. The porch is, is, uh, six feet from the actual wall and what we did was, uh, we, we were asked for an enclosure, uh, or a screen-in porch, uh, so that my wife, who has cancer, COPD, and is on four liters of oxygen and diabetes, was able to sit out on the porch. But we found without it being glassed in that it did no good. She wasn't able to sit outside, uh, with a portable oxygen concentrator. So that's why we're requesting the, the variance so that she, it would increase her quality of life to be able to sit out on the porch in some sun and at least be able to have her oxygen machine out there and breathe properly. Without it, she can't sit outside at all. Uh, both neighbors have approved it in writing. The HOA, uh, approved that it, that it also be built and the actual city planning, uh, fire, local fire department, uh, gave his approval at, at the meeting that, uh, the builders attended. So that's why we're requesting that, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Thank you for the comments.
Uh, and the windows are removable, Ashley. They all come out, they slide and tilt out. You can take them out if need be. Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Um, this was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission. Vice Chair DeSavio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I haven't received, uh, not one complaint about this and it backs up to Bradley, so that doesn't really affect anybody. Uh, so Carl and Irene, go ahead and enjoy it. I'm gonna make a motion for approval for item number 28, VAR 75158.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Is a motion on the floor? Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 29, VAR 75205, applicant owner MCP2 LLC for possible action, request for a variance to allow eight-foot tall block walls and chain link fencing with two feet of concertina, where concertina wire, where top where eight feet is the maximum, uh, height allowed at 1964 Sycamore Trail, Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow an eight-foot tall block wall where six feet is allowed and use razor, razor wire and chain link wall materials where not allowed unless approved as part of an overall development plan. As no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, staff concludes that the hardship is preferential in nature. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. Please note that there are additional letters of support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Uh, yes. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Trossper. I'm with Trossper Communications, 2275 Corporate Circle, Suite 275 Henderson, Nevada, 89074. And today I am here representing the landowner, MCP2 LLC, and requesting a variance to keep the eight-foot tall block wall with the two-foot razor wire and the chain link fencing. In the staff report, you'll find that the land was annexed into the city in 1997 and the commercial building was in 19, was built in 1998. Through the years, wall crime increased in the block, the block wall was heightened and the razor wire was added. We owe an apology to this commission as we did not realize that we were non-compliance until code enforcement came out and cited us. So while this is not an excuse, we accept full responsibility, but it is the truth. I have two letters here tonight I'd like to introduce into public record. One is from a tenant construction by Mirage and then the other one is from the owner and property manager. And if I could, I have 15 copies of each letter. Thank you. And it appears I did bring photos, but it appears that you guys have really good photos here. So what I can do is I have Marilyn Lee, who is the property manager, and tenant Craig Perman, who are available to answer any questions that I cannot address.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, this was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission for discussion and we'll quickly look at what's being handed out and then I will send it to Commissioner Williams.
Chairman Cherry, uh, I have a concern. We have an eight-foot wall and you're wanting to put an additional two feet of block wire on top of that?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
That is exactly what they're requesting.
Okay, so we're talking about a 10-foot wall, then what, uh, might I ask staff, is the, what is the height that is required or allowed? 10 feet or what?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, in the C2 zoning district, eight feet is the maximum allowed without a variance and, and that's why the variance is before you.
Okay, okay.
I, 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 I can't see that. I can't see putting up three feet of razor wire on top of an eight-foot fence. It doesn't make sense to me.
And what the, excuse me, and what the landowner has expressed to me is that, and as you can see from the letters that were presented to you here tonight, that this is more of a safety issue. Um, the surrounding neighborhood, as you are all familiar with, is a high crime area. Um, so this is done to prevent crime. It's a matter of preventing their property. And like I said, I do have a tenant here who could speak about several times that they've been broken into, um, and as well as the cars can't be left out at night. So they can address that even on a more personal level than I can because I've lived through it.
Okay, well, we'll entertain that in a second, but I do believe Commissioner Quinn has some comments she would like to add.
Thank you. Um, through you, um, Chair Cherry, the issue is this, and we emailed back and forth. Right around the corner from you, um, somebody contacted me that owns a mini storage. They too have the razor wire. They too are going to be fined if it's not taken down and it's been there as long as your property has been. So the issue becomes if we allow you to do it, we have, we would, I would think, allow them to do it. So in other words, the precedent has to be set either none or everyone can do it. And therefore, I'm not going to support this tonight because it just happened around the corner and they, they have to take it down. So.
Understood.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Commissions, Vice Chair DeSavio?
Just a quick question for staff. If the razor wire was put on the inside of the property line, uh, below that first course, are they able to do that so that way they still, if anybody did try to jump over that wall and get into that property, it'd still have that protection but wouldn't have that prison I saw going on?
Mr. Chairman, through you, uh, if the wall height is no more than eight feet, then that's what the zoning code allows for that C2 district.
So they could do it, is what I'm hearing.
From, from a zoning standpoint, in, uh, the height allowed, that, that would be allowed. I don't know if there's any kind of other issues, building safety, that, that would come into play, uh, but from a height issue, if, if eight feet is, is what's there with the block wall and, and there's no razor wire to make that higher, uh, it would be acceptable.
So are you saying that if the razor wire is inside the eight-feet wall, not extending over it, then that would be acceptable?
Mr. Chairman, through you, yes, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Then, then somebody, maybe I'm thinking wrong, I don't know here, but it seems to me that the razor wire would be a deterrent. If I can't see the razor wire and I'm inclined to come over the fence, I'm gonna come over the fence and I'm gonna get cut up, then who's liable for that? That, that's just the point. I, I'm, I'm at the point where I can't see, uh, allowing this and that was a rhetorical question, so you don't have to answer it. I'm going to move to deny.
Okay. Is a motion on the floor? Please cast your votes.
I was just indicating, Mr. Chairman, I, I guess if, if what staff is saying is correct, she would need, um, the city's permission to put it on the interior. Just the height is the issue.
So if, if I might, Mr. Chairman, I do want to clarify what staff said. So from a zoning perspective only, because we don't know if there's some other rule about, you know, putting razor wire inside and, and that not being visible to, to the Commissioner's point, um, so there may be an issue there. So the height is not an issue. However, this body still would have to approve the use of razor wire in any kind of fencing because, uh, it's not an approved material. So that still requires the planning commission to take, uh, to approve that even if they were to lower the wall so that the wire didn't exceed the current, uh, height restriction that this variance is requesting. So I just want to make that clear for the record. Razor wire would still require this, uh, body to approve the use of that material and only from a zoning perspective are we saying that if you got it lower and put it on the inside, would that not be an issue? But we do not know if there's any other issues out there in any other codes or concerns, um, about putting it on the inside of a wall.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I also have a question on the motion. Because they're also, you guys are talking about the height of the wall and the razor wire and the chain link, which are three separate issues. Under the variance, is the motion to deny the variance of the razor wire?
Yeah, all, Mr. Chairman, all the items are together, all the, they're asking for one variance for all of those things, so.
Mr. Chairman, so not to, not to put too fine a point, but the, the body does have the discretion, the, the reason it's one variance is because it's all one section of code, so we don't make them separate and pay three different application fees as a, um, as a way to be responsive to, uh, our citizens. So this board could take those issues. So if they want to approve the height, um, of a 10-foot wall or whatever it is, they can take the height separate from the use of the razor wire, separate from, um, the material. Those are multiple pieces, I believe, of this variance, but I'll look to staff to, to clarify that, but generally speaking.
And you would need three separate votes.
Correct. You would need to start segmenting it out to make the record clear.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
To deny.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor for denial. Please cast your votes.
I didn't get it. She, she called. You should have.
And that motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Item number 30, VAR 75218, applicant owner Sarah and Daniel V. Gonzalez for possible action, request for a variance to allow zero-foot side yard setback where three feet is required, a zero-foot separation from the main building where six feet is required, an accessory structure that is not aesthetically compatible with the principal dwelling unit, and a height that exceeds the midpoint between the eaves and the ridge lines of the principal dwelling from existing accessory structure at 5036 Maverick Street, Ward 4. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Daniel Gonzalez. My wife Sarah reside at 5036.
Yeah, if you could hang on one second, we're gonna get the staff report and then I'll come right back to you guys.
Okay. I also have some packets.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow existing accessory structure, patio cover, to have a zero-foot side yard setback where three feet is required, a zero-foot separation from the main building where six feet is required, and do not be aesthetically compatible with the principal dwelling as required. As no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, staff concludes that the hardship is preferential in nature. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, Daniel, if you can give me your name again and address for the record. Thank you.
Dan Gonzalez, Sarah Gonzalez, my wife, 5036 Maverick Street, Las Vegas, 89130.
Thank you. And please, if you could tell us about the application.
Uh, when we purchased the home, we didn't have an HOA, so we thought we're all good and fine. We talked to D.R. Horton about it and they said you can, anyways, that's our mistake. So they approved, or we, um, had the buil, we had the structure built and code compliance, I guess, came by and cited us on the property. Sorry for that. We're really sorry. Didn't realize we were non-compliant on that issue. Like, my, my main concern was the HOA situation and we didn't have one, that's why we bought the property, so that's still ignorant to the law, so it's, it's not acceptable, but that's what we're asking for is, uh, some, um, leniency on that. Um, as you can see, we've, it's quite an extensive, uh, um, cover for our RV, which we've paid quite a bit of money for and, and, uh, would like a variance on that.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, this was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Toussaint?
Uh, hello, Mr. Gonzalez. We did talk on the phone and, uh, I did drive by the property. I sat there for a long time. It looks even bigger in person than, than it does in this photograph. Yeah, I, I tend to be a rule follower. I really am. Uh, I, rules are put in place for a reason and that is to protect the public. Uh, we did talk and I asked you if you could get your neighbors to, uh, sign off on this and if they didn't have a problem. And it looks like the neighbor just to the, uh, the other side of your property, they don't seem to have a problem with it. Uh, I don't know about the people behind you because I couldn't actually see from, from the other street. Um, there are other structures in the area not quite as big as this and, you know, unfortunately, you, you were led to believe something that wasn't true and I, and I, and I understand that and I, and I believe you. Uh, like I said, I, I was wringing my hands over this over and over and over again, but after talking to you and seeing the applications and the emails that I got and the communication that I've had from your neighbors, uh, I will give a one-time variance to approve.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Toussaint. And I'll, I'll also add that, uh, based on the testimony and the backup given and the letter that shows the approval by the neighbor, also noting in our packet, uh, it is aesthetically pleasing compared to a lot of the other ones I'm seeing.
It's actually beautiful. I mean, really and truly, when I went by there, I went, oh my gosh.
Yeah, so I, I will be supporting as well as you, so you know. Would you like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor? Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Good day.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to item number 31, SUP 75204, applicant owner Monae Moni Monsano et al. For possible action, request for a special use permit for a proposed 18-unit motel, excuse me, hotel motel or hotel suites use at 846 East Sahara Avenue, Ward 3. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to operate a two-story, 18-unit hotel in a vacant building. While a hotel would be a compatible use on the proposed site, the submitted floor plans are insufficient in detail for staff to determine if the use is consistent with the overall objectives of the general plan and that the use will not compromise the health, safety and welfare of the public. Therefore, staff is recommended denial. There, please note, there have been additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Hi, my name is Eric Ashtramecki. My address is 820 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 260, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89146. I represent Mr. Monae Monsano, who is the owner of 846 East Sahara Avenue and several buildings in the immediate area. I have with me today as well our consultant, Mr. Paul Workman, and our project manager, Mason Workman, from Billmar Contracting. I want to thank you today for giving me the time to speak with you. I've reviewed the staff report that was written and sent out prior to this meeting and I just want to make sure I address some of the concerns that are listed on there. This building was built in 1964. It's been vacant since it was sold by the Church of Scientology to Mr. Monae in 2013. As you guys know, the historic Commercial Center District area has really struggled and local businesses there most of the time sign one-tier leases and then they go bankrupt. And this was a unique project that we put together. This includes a scope of work that's over $600,000. Um, this to retrofit it for ADA accessibility, um, fire suppression systems, backflow preventers, which are not in existence today. This will bring it up to complete fire and safety codes. Um, that spec is $600,000. Our contractor has agreed to fulfill the plans with a 20% deposit. That's $100,000. We can't possibly pay that and finalize those final plans showing the changes for ADA until we have the entitlements and the SUP approved. That's why those final plans aren't as detailed. The room sizes are all staying the same. The bathroom ADA accessibility is going to be moving internal fixtures around. It's going to be widening door frames. Um, all of these things are mapped out, so I look forward to answering any questions and getting your guys' feedback on this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Schlaubman?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I tend to agree with staff. This is a, it's a rather, well, I'd hate to use the term weird or awkward layout, but it's not laid out like we typically see a hotel. I'm not saying that all hotels need to be designed the same, but I just don't understand. You walk into a lounge, and then beyond that lounge, you're, you have four different, or three different bedrooms, or, I don't know if that's three bedrooms that's all connected to that lounge, and they're all rented as one, or if they're in three separate, I mean, three separate rentals?
Do you see this display that I have right here?
Hold on, hold on one second. And it, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, I think a hotel in the area, I mean, would, would be good, but I think what you need to do is get your plans put together and bring us a complete package. To use it as a justification that your contractors can charge you twenty percent and a hundred thousand dollars to finish this set of plans, I mean, that's not a justification. You know, I could take this set of plans and have it finished for about twenty thousand dollars with real nice elevations. So, I mean, at least to be able to come up to the planning commission, you just need to have something a little bit better and a little, little bit more thought through before you come up to the planning commission. A lot of these bathrooms, I mean, it's three feet wide by eight feet deep. It's just a awkward, awkward layout. I mean, whenever I was reviewing this last night, you have a two-foot walk, walk path between a bathtub and a sink, which just tells me this wasn't thought through, I mean, at all, so...
So, on the plans that our contractor, we actually, actually tried to set a meeting with Building Department to review those plans. They wouldn't release them to us. They did try to set a meeting with Building Department to review those plans, to make sure that they understood and showed them how they were going to redo those bathrooms to make them ADA compliant. The Building Department said, no, that's not needed. We can go and proceed with the plans as is, and the entitlements can be approved, but they're not going to issue us any building permits until those final plans are submitted and approved, and that was why you probably don't have that information in front of you.
I'm not looking for building permits. I'm looking for a plan on what, what you're actually planning on building. I mean, you're not going to build, build this set of plans right here, are you?
This is the way the existing building is laid out. What we're doing is we're taking these rooms that aren't ADA compliant and making them that. The bathrooms are big enough, but the fixtures have to be moved. You're right. There isn't five feet for a handicapped person to swivel. The door frames aren't wide enough. They're two inches short. Those entire things are scoped out in the scope of work, but you're right. The full build plans that you would normally see from an architect aren't finalized done, but those are encompassed in the work that we're looking to do to this project.
Okay, when, when I say a full set of plans, I'm not talking about a full construction set of, construction documents with architecturals, M P and Es, structuralists, and, you know, ADA details. I'm talking about just a, a floor plan that shows exactly what, what you're going to be doing. I mean, it, it should be fairly easy to show, show us what, what you're planning on doing.
The rooms on the floor plans are exactly as they will be.
But the bathrooms aren't.
The bathrooms fixtures internally are going to move, but I, I guess I could, I mean, our contractor could show you that the, the shower is going to be on one side versus another, and, and that's going to allow for a wheelchair person to roll straight in and not have to worry about an obstruction of a sink. I'd love to have our, our contractor and project manager come up and speak to that if there are concerns.
I, I feel that this is more, I mean, even the way it's set up with all the common bathrooms, I think going for a hostel or something of that sort would have been a little bit closer to what, what you should have been trying to go for versus a hotel, but...
It's our understanding that it's the same exact zoning requirements and, and requirements as far as building code, that a hotel, that building does not deter a hostel or a hotel that requires the same license, so that wouldn't be of any difference. We actually were originally looking at doing it as that, but we were told, hey, this has to be a fully height hotel, so we decided to bring it up and, you know, spend the money to bring it up to all building and fire safety code requirements, that is any that's required of any hospitality establishment here.
I've, I've seen this building before. I think something needs to happen to it. You know, I, I'd love to see something happen. I, when I first read that a hotel was going in on Sahara in this location, I thought it would be amazing. I just wish you would have spent a little bit more time and, and gave us a, a floor plan that we actually could have looked at. I mean, what, what was ultimately going to be built, so anyways, I'll turn it over to the rest of the planning commission and see what they have to say.
Can Commissioner Schlobman, being, you know, this is an S U P, which I know you know, I guess this is, it's an out-of-the-box project in the sense when I look at it and I see four bathrooms and a host of rooms going down a hall, and typically, and, and that doesn't like put me into the no category, it puts me into a little bit of confusion.
Mm-hmm.
And typically, when there's, you know, a different project like this, the applicant reaches out to the different people in the ward or on the commission to kind of sit and talk through the project, so it's, it's, there's some clarity to it.
We met with, oh, sorry, sir.
And, and I didn't get to meet with you. And so it, I sit here with some confusion on where it's going. I see renderings that are different from what I've had in the backup, which would have been nice for me to kind of understand more, but there's still some confusion for me. I, I can see it now clearly, but I can tell you in the future would have helped to kind of sit before and go through the process, so, you know, I'm not thinking, I look at it and I think of a hostel. I don't even see, it doesn't feel like a hotel to me, you know, I don't know. But th- those are my comments. That's, that's where I sit right now. Anyone else?
May I speak one more thing?
Sure.
We met with Councilman Bob Coffin and Felipe Ortiz on November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, showed him these plans, showed him these renderings, and we had good support, that it was a great thing for the project.
And that's what happens when you meet with people.
Yeah.
You start, they start to understand it, and you start to gain support. I didn't get that, and that's why I see here confusion, so... Commissioner Schlobman?
And I agree. I was, Randall Lamon talking to you versus looking at your renderings up here, and when the chairman was talking, I started looking at your renderings. That would have helped me out a lot, just seeing what, what you had, and I really wish you would have reached out to the planning commission versus City Council, because we could have understood it better. And I wish we would have had these renderings that you have in, in your hands in our backup, because that would have helped us understand a little bit better, too. So I wish you luck on this, and hopefully, you know, you can get that into the backup if it goes to City Council, so they can see it, and you can have another conversation with Felipe and, and Councilman Coffin, and show them the elevation, so they truly understand what's going on just in the future, especially if you have something weird like this, you know, and, and you're changing the elevations or floor plans, and you have something better to show us, it would be always good to reach out to us, and so... Chairman?
Commissioner Roush?
Just a question for the applicant. You've got, on the second floor, it looks like eleven bedrooms with two common area bathrooms, and on the first floor, six bedrooms with two very small common area bathrooms. Can I get either staff, or maybe Commissioner Schlobman knows, because you're in construction too, what is the code, or what is the requirement for a youth hostel in terms of common area shared bathrooms? I mean, it just seems like it's a, seems like it's a slim margin, but maybe I'm wrong. It just, that's a lot of shared, that's a lot of people sharing two bathrooms.
So there's two bathrooms on the... Two bathrooms are being put in right here. They will have showers in them. There'll be two bathrooms here, so there'll be four downstairs, and then on the second floor.
I viewed the first floor. I thought that was for the conference area, those two bathrooms. I didn't realize they had showers.
The, the way this, the way this is being rented is an entire corporate will be able to rent out this entire building, so that you're going to have groups, corporate entities, being able to rent out the entire building, to be able to have their guests stay there for, you know, an extended period of time. So with that being said, these bathrooms will have showers, and guests will be able to use them if they decide they wanted to. These two bathrooms will have showers. They're being ADA retrofitted. This bathroom here, this bedroom here has an attached shower, which would be ADA retrofitted. These bath, these, what, two bathrooms here will be ADA retrofitted, and then we also have two planned designs, which are shown to turn this one into a bathroom, or this into another bathroom as well. So total, we'll potentially have between eight and nine different bathrooms for what will be eighteen bedrooms.
So that'll differ from the floor plan that you submit?
Correct. These were done a little bit differently, and as we were getting into it, and we started talking with our architect, they advised that we probably wanted to put in more bathrooms, and that building and fire safety was probably going to want to do that. So we had in their scope of work an additional fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in cost to add those two bathrooms.
So you can see how confusing this is for us, right? Because, I mean, I'm sitting here trying to make a decision as to how many people are going to use the same bathroom.
Absolutely.
And the plan I'm looking at is like eleven rooms, and if you put a married couple in there, that's twenty-two people, and using two bathrooms, I hope I don't have to...
No, absolutely.
But besides that, it just looks to me like you're setting this up for a future short-term rental or some other type of high-intensity use. It just, it, it looks like you're going down a road that I don't know that makes a lot of sense to do, but I, I don't know if staff has any comment. Do you have any feeling for a youth hostel level of intensity on, is there a rule of thumb for bathrooms to bedroom ratio, or do we not even have that in the code? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, through you, in the zoning code, we, we don't have anything that addresses that. That would be through the, you know, building and safety and the building permit process, and so I couldn't answer those questions.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just one quick comment before Commissioner Schlobman makes a, a motion. You're looking at a person with the most disabled son probably in Las Vegas.
Yes, ma'am.
And when you tell me you're going to, you might, and you're going to make it ADA, if it's not flat in front of me, right, I'm never going to support it, because down the road, you might follow through, but this shows me absolutely nothing that I would support because of my son. Therefore, I will not be supporting this tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Tucson?
Yeah, I, I'm confused. For someone who was in a wheelchair for a very, very long time, I am sensitive to ADA-compliant bathrooms and bedrooms and buildings, and I do agree with Commissioner Quinn on, on this. To me, this is confusing. I really don't know what we're voting on. We have one set of plans, but yet we have something else, and personally, I can't support this today. Sorry.
Commissioner Schlobman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and like I say, I wish I would have had this other set of plans, because it would have helped me understand this and visualize it a lot better, and if we could have had a chance to review this beforehand. But trying to take a look at it now and just making sure that it, it would satisfy myself and everybody else, I think it's a little bit too much, a little too late. Just repeat, just in the future, if you have something great like this, because I think this is a lot better rendering and, and plans that you have, it's always good to share it with us before the meeting. And so, that being the case, we'll, hopefully, you'll reach out to the council people and everybody before it goes to City Council, but at this time, I'm going to have to move to follow staff's recommendation of denial.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for denial. Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to City Council and be heard as part of their agenda on March sixth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number thirty-two, S D R seven four six five one, applicant owner Providence Thirty-two Investments LLC, for possible action, request for a site development plan review for proposed thirty lot, single-family attached residential development with waivers of the Cliffs Edge Design Guidelines on the west side of Clark County, two fifteen, at the southern terminus of Larry McBride Street, Ward six. Staff recommends approval. Related item thirty-three, T M P seven four six five two, for possible action or request for tentative map for thirty lot, single-family residential subdivision, Ward six. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing a thirty lot, single-family attached residential development with waivers of the Cliffs Edge Design Guidelines on two point four four acres. The Providence Design Review Committee has reviewed and conditionally approved the development plans for this project, and has provided justification for requested waivers. Requested waivers are for building separation, building setback, open space, and exterior design. In all cases, the Providence Design Review Committee found the waivers warranted due to the small size of the development, the irregular shape of the parcel, and the minimal or mitigated impact this development will have on adjacent development. Staff concludes that the proposed development is compatible with developments in the area and concurs with the Providence Design Review Committee's waiver recommendation. Therefore, staff has recommended approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address to the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Allard, one nine seven East California Avenue, Suite three hundred, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one zero four. I'm here representing that client, Providence Thirty-two Investments LLC. And what we have before you is a proposal for thirty single-family residential attached homes on two point four four acres, totaling roughly thirteen dwelling units per acre. This is broken up into essentially four housing blocks that consist of seven to eight residents maximum. We are in the Cliffs Edge Overlay District, and due to that, we have certain design guidelines. We have to follow some of those being the style, so we're in a Tuscan Mediterranean style, which is coherent with surrounding neighborhoods. Some of the variances, or I'm sorry, some of the waivers we were requesting from the Cliffs Edge Design Guidelines have to do largely with separation distances, and those would be balcony-to-balcony separations, building-to-building separations. And just to touch on that real quickly, sort of hardship of this lot is, is, it's a pie-shaped. It's very triangular, so it poses quite a problem to, to get as many units as we need to make this feasible investment-wise. So that was some of the waivers we were requesting, is reducing those distance separations. We also have a waiver from Cliffs Edge that requires ten thousand square feet of open space. They request that this is contiguous space. We have over ten thousand, but it's not, it's not in one space. We have roughly nine thousand to the south, which we're proposing as a dog walk park, and we also have another eighty-seven hundred square feet where's a community pool area. This dog park area connects out to the Beltway, the city's Beltway Parkway. Other waivers that we requested from Cliffs Edge was the requirement for three, three-color schemes. On this property, because we have four building blocks, the third color scheme would kind of throw things off kilter. All our requests from Cliffs Edge were accepted and approved, so we have approval from Cliffs Edge and staff recommended approval, so we'd appreciate you guys do the same, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
Thank you, and I will quickly disclose, I have missed Mr. Allard before. We've never done business before. We talked about apartments some time ago, but have never done anything, don't have any contracts together, never had any contracts together. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard? Okay, there's three microphones. I'm going to need your name, your address, if you're for or against, and I'll give you a minute to tell us why.
Good evening. My name's Ben LaCombe, sixty-five thirty-five Dunn's River Street up in Oak Ridge, which the adjacent community. I'm a public school teacher here in Clark County. I always tell my kids to get involved in government, and so this is my opportunity. I've never done this before, but I definitely know that progress is something that must continue, and obviously that, they look to obviously make money and provide homes there. I'm just more concerned than anything is just how many homes in such a small space, and I was, I would like to cut down on traffic and, and making sure, cutting down on crime and all of those things. Just making sure that maybe making a little less homes in that area, if possible, it just seems thirty in such a small area seems very high. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Next person, there's three microphones, we can all come on up. Need your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Dean Takahashi. Address is one zero five five seven Constance Springs Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. My house is, that's the view from my yard, from my backyard, from my master bedroom window, and that would take away the view of the mountains. I also have a different one there, and I also have another one looking at the city. So this being that said, that with this development right behind my backyard, it's going to obstruct my view that we all paid for when we bought with Richmond American Home, we paid a premium lot to have that lot, and we picked it just because we could see the strip and, and the views of, of the community. I oppose this because I don't believe that this fits in with the Providence, it's not conducive with the lifestyle in the area of the single-family homes of what we all bought into at Providence, so that's my proposal.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Can I get your name and address, please, to the record?
My name's Jillian Chevalier. I live at sixty-five thirty-six Hova Supai Falls, also in Oak Ridge.
Could you spell your last name, Jillian?
C H E V A L I E R.
Thank you.
What he didn't mention about this, should I move to this microphone so you can see? What he didn't mention about this is this small parcel here is our eighty, there are eighty-two homes currently, single-family dwellings. This, right above my fingernail, which is smaller than my fingernail, is now being proposed to thirty units. I just want to make that clear. I'm just going to read off what I've written. I'm a little bit better writer than public speaker. As far as we can tell, this is the first notice we've received. As a community, not only are there multiple members of Oak Ridge here tonight, within twenty-four hours, dozens of homeowners within Providence have logged onto the website to oppose this proposal, so it's not just Oak Ridge that's opposing this, it's other homeowners within Providence. Developer, developers are attempting to change the zoning from rural, single-family to... Developers are attempting to change the zoning from rural, single-family to medium-density townhomes. As the parcel currently zoned, it would only hold four houses. They're applying to build 30 townhouses. This is an extreme change from four to 30. My biggest issue is with the safety and traffic. The location they're building will lead to dangerous traffic situations in an area with school bus stops. The only road in and out of the proposed community is currently very quiet with little to no vehicle access. As soon as you increase traffic, that poses a major safety hazard, especially when the 30 proposed units can house a minimum of 30 people. Imagine adding 30 to 60 vehicles or more in an area that public currently uses for walking, running, riding bicycles, et cetera, with their children and families. Furthermore, parking for the proposed community is very limited, so where would the guests park within the community? Behind our community of Oak Ridge? Just adding more traffic and safety issues. So that's my main concern, is that the safety and the increase in traffic around an area where there is no traffic, that's my biggest issue.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Can I get your name and address, please, to the record, sir?
Good evening. My name is Mark Howarth. I live at 10555 Constant Springs Avenue. I'm just gonna also read to you, ladies and gentlemen, the proposed development does not really fall within the overwhelming majority of Providence's single-family detached homes plan. To my knowledge, there are only a couple non-single-family detached home communities in all of Providence, and they are located near larger, high-traffic, four-lane road or commercial areas, not in the middle of a small, cozy, intimate neighborhood like Oak Ridge. Also, potentially doubling the number of vehicles per acre after you adjust it down to the physical space compared to Oak Ridge's community, as well as cramming 100 to 150 people into two small acres, will not only negatively impact the peaceful atmosphere of the adjoining community, it also decreases the overall property values. When we moved into Oak Ridge, we agreed with Providence's statement that they advertise heavily on master-plan community. When you go into Providence, you're coming into home, and it's a specific mindset, it's a very comfortable, very, and we invested our lives and our money and our well-being into this area. And now to take and put townhomes right in the middle of our community, and adding that, cramming that many people and that many homes into that area is very against what Providence for that type of layout is about. I understand the developer, the applicant, wants to get the most bang for their buck.
Need you to wrap up, sir, please.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We've gone well over the minute.
I will. And so that's our contention, is that this is making money for them, but it is taking away from what we're, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for your comments. Name and address, please, to the record.
My name is Mary Howarth, and I live at 10 Triple Nickel, Constant Springs Avenue. I love saying that. I am a proud homeowner as well there in Oak Ridge, and we, okay, I gotta just get to the point. With these townhomes, the potential of traffic increase is substantial, and if you will notice on your drawing there of the area, it is a one road in, one road out, one road out only. And where that road goes right now, as she said, you know, people ride their bikes, walk their dogs, whatever, but it's just, it's a, when you go out that road, the only way out, you go out that road, you have to turn right, and then, then it's a one-way turn, and then the first turn is a no-U turn to get onto the 215. So we have a potential, I would say most homeowners have two cars, you know, I don't know, so 60 cars, 30 to 60 cars, and right where they have to turn is two bus stops, and there's so many kids, little children there. It's just really a high concern for me as well.
Thank you for your comments, Mary. Thank you. Can I get your name and address to the record, please?
Hi, Tom Knight, 6430 Dunn's River Street. I border the property and the parcel in question. It would back up, the front of their houses would back up to the back of my house, so the variance that they're asking for would directly impact me. I moved to Providence. Providence markets itself as a community with lots of green spaces. I don't know of any other places in Providence where you'd back up houses against one another like this. When I moved into Oak Ridge, I made sure that they'll check the zoning on the lot behind me, and it was single, a rural single, and because of that, I was told that three, four houses tops could go in back there. So I made my purchase. All of those 19 homeowners paid extra lot premiums to live along there based on the current zoning. Now, someone's gonna come along and put up buildings which are higher density than anything we have anywhere else in Providence, and it's gonna impact our housing values. Lower townhomes have a propensity to turn into rental properties. Then you have, you have 30 people, association members there, as soon as half of them are rental owners, you run into a situation where they're more concerned about profitability than maintenance of the property. I've personally seen this before in life. Liberty Square Apartments was originally a condominium, our townhome development in Providence, and after it was built, my understanding is, is they pulled out of the annexation and became an apartment building. So that being the case, we would have that same potential concern well down the road that, you know, that could turn into rental property. This was, one last point, this was annexed on 12/28, and our association only found out about it three days ago. If you, if you check online, a lot of people have opposed this measure, a lot more people will oppose it if given time. There was such, such short notice to get word out about this, which impacted the vote.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else, can I get your name and address, please, to the record?
Hi, Carol Knight, 7554 Whitman Colonial in Las Vegas, 89166. I am a resident of Providence, not in the immediate area, but I am in complete agreement with everything that has been said to oppose this development. I particularly do not, I feel that this will negatively impact the home values in Providence, given that they are single-family homes and the development proposed is for uptown homes, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Anyone else in the public like to be heard? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing and give the applicant a couple minutes for rebuttal.
Yes, so just to touch on some of those points, I thank everyone in the neighborhood for coming out and voicing their opinion and their concerns. With regards to the parking, for visitor parking, we're not asking for any parking waivers, so we meet all the parking requirements for visitors and residents. We're not asking for any zone change. This is actually a medium-density lot. I understand it is kind of odd how the Cliffs Edge Overlay was mapped out, but this was originally a medium-density, which I believe is a 16 units per acre parcel, so we could actually go for a denser arrangement than we have proposed. Also, some other particular uses that could be put on this lot are skilled nursing facilities and so forth. With as far as protecting views, I mean, I can't speak to what someone promised, someone as far as protecting views, but we're basically proposing something that this is a use permit, and we're not asking for any waiver, or any variances to what's already there.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Savio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ryan, I just got a few questions. Okay, was there any neighborhood meeting held in regards to this parcel?
There was no outreach done by the investor.
All right, so we got no outreach. What would you say that these townhomes would be priced per square foot when they hit the market? Would you know?
I would be guessing, to be honest, but I mean, over 250, over 2...
Is that what I'm saying? Okay, all right. And then, elevation-wise, what, the tallest building that backs up to most of the neighbors that spoke here, what's that height? Is it 35 feet? Is it 50 feet? What is that height?
33 foot, 2 inches.
33 feet?
To the top of the ridge.
And on the elevation of the dirt there, is that, does that elevation pretty much stay, or is it dug down? Or is it, is there fill coming in?
There's about a nine-foot drop from the front to the back of the property, so if we look at the site plan, this back area situated is actually about nine feet higher than this point here, so we're actually tiering the development rather than, we're trying not to bring in fill, or we're trying not to remove a whole lot, so.
So what backs up to the existing neighbors would actually be from their backyard, would they be, would it be fair to say they'd almost be staring into their second-floor window as if it was a two-story house?
I believe the rear, the properties to the rear are retained by two feet, so they're up two feet higher, but yes, they will see this elevation.
Okay, 'cause I'm just trying to adjust the concerns of what Dean mentioned with his view. I get it, you know, views aren't guaranteed, but I'm gonna sit here and try to do the best I can with what I got.
Of course.
The reason why I got behind this project and was fine with it, just to put it out there, is it was, and it looks to be, pretty high-end townhomes. I mean, you're not, a lot of people were concerned with, you know, riffraff may be coming in there, crime, I've heard my values are gonna go down. Well, that doesn't happen. I've never seen values go down, especially with this kind of product that's getting ready to be proposed. And I'm more inclined to lean towards this project due to the fact that, as was stated by Ryan, there is potential there that could be some type of assisted living or some kind of more commercially-dense item that could possibly go in there, and I'm sure the last thing you want is ambulances running in and out of that property of all hours of the night making noise or whatever. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. The only thing that really kind of kicks me sideways is that you guys did not reach out to the neighborhood. To me, that's huge. And I like the look, and I don't know if any of these, if you can put the next elevations you have where it really shows the detail of the building. It is a beautiful product, without a doubt, and I could tell you Councilwoman Fior would not let anything go in there that wouldn't live up to the standards of Providence or better. And that's why we were kind of leaning towards this. The only rub I have, honestly, is you didn't reach out to the neighborhood. I know it's an irregular-shaped piece of property, and I, trust me, guys, I want to make sure you guys are happy, and I want to make sure that development goes on. I don't really want to see any kind of commercially-dense deal go in there. I'd like to see something like this, but I also want to see the applicant maybe asked to have this obeyed for 30 days and do a neighborhood meeting and then bring it back, only because then that way we can maybe come to some kind of consensus here. I like having neighborhood meetings. I like making sure that the people in the areas in which I live are happy. I think it's a great product, I just think that you need to, you need to sell it to them. So that's where I stand on it.
If it's, if we're asking the applicant...
That's what I'm about to do. Oh, excuse me. I'm asking the applicant to hold the item for, or obey it for 30 days till February 26th, and give the people the opportunity to sit down, maybe move some stuff around, make sure you got enough buffer between their rear yard and your front door, just to, you gotta reach out. That's what I ask. So do you agree to obey this item for 30 days? And have a neighborhood meeting?
Your microphone's not on. I did hear a "yes" twice, but, is there a "but"? There we go.
Yes, it's fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
So that would be my, my motion.
All right. There's a motion on the floor? Please cast your votes. That was a good explanation, too. Thank you. That motion carries. Oh, 33, we need to vote on.
Oh, I apologize. You can vote, vote to be obeyed.
For the application?
And that would go the same for item 33?
Yes, that's correct, a tentative map.
So motion is to obey it for 30 days. Item number 33, TMP 74652.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the director's business. Item number 34, TXT 75284, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for discussion, possible action request to amend LVMC Title 1906 related to the RE, excuse me, zoning district, and to provide for other related matters. Staff doesn't have a recommendation. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this tax amendment would reduce the minimum lot size in the RE zoning district from 20,000 square feet to 18,000 square feet. The reduction of lot size would remain consistent with the maximum density of 2.49 dwelling units of the desert rural residential density, residential density land use category, Title 1910180 pertaining to the, let's see here, Title 1910180 pertaining to the residential preservation overlay, excuse me, and the provisions of the inter-local agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Clark County. Staff has no recommendation.
Okay. This is noticed as a public hearing. Anyone like to be heard? And I have number 34. Seeing no one, I will close it and turn it over to the commission for discussion. I personally don't have any issue with the request myself. Commissioner Schlotman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
On item 34, TXT 75284, move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to the city council in ordinance form at a future date.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 35, TXT 75285, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action request to amend LVMC Title 1906 related to R4 zoning district, and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this tax amendment would remove the maximum height restriction within the R4 zoning district. The R4 zoning district is intended to permit the development of high-density multifamily units. Building height would still be restricted by a footnote limiting height outside of the redevelopment area to no more than 10 stories or 150 feet, whichever is less, as well as by the restrictions imposed by residential adjacency when located next to single-family developments. In addition, variables, excuse me, variables associated with development standards such as the provision of landscaping, parking, and other required amenities will also be a de facto limitation on height of these types of development. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioner Savio?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 35, TXT...
Commissioner Ross, I see her light. I'm sorry to interrupt. Commissioner Ross?
I didn't know we were gonna go straight to a motion. I apologize. I just had some items of clarification with staff, if that's okay with everyone.
Please.
Thank you. Could staff please tell me, there's no accompanying map that shows us the downtown revitalization areas? Is that the same as the redevelopment area? And if it is, does it include all areas within the redevelopment area? So essentially, there would be no height restriction within the redevelopment area? Or am I reading it in the reverse? The height restriction outside the redevelopment area?
Mr. Chairman, through you, the height restriction would be outside of the redevelopment area.
So within the redevelopment area, if there is a property that is to be proposed and it's R4 in density, it's allowable under the master plan or under Title 19, and it's adjacent to a residential use, like some of the complaints that we've had with properties on Charleston that back up to, you know, Scotch 80s, the properties, you know, over there on Shadow and Bannies, and what is the, what is the provision there? If there is to be no restriction on R4 and someone came in with an R4 application, is there the adjacency setback ratio still?
Mr. Chairman, through you, residential adjacency would still apply, so when you have a site that's located adjacent to single-family zoning districts, R1, RE, et cetera, it does kick in the residential adjacency, which has the three-to-one slope for height and kind of kicks those developments back as far as setbacks and so forth. And then, once again, like I said, when designing these sites, there are still some, some just natural curbs on some of the development height-wise. They still have to provide all the parking, all the landscaping and so forth that's required, and so unless they're willing to build, you know, stories of parking garage as well as the tower, then, you know, they're still limited by some of those development factors.
I'm just looking down the road. I mean, as we're looking at the medical district, we're looking at other areas in the downtown redevelopment area, we, I want to be encouraging of development. I am a big proponent of revitalizing our neighborhoods. I've been speaking very openly of that for many years now. I just want to make sure that when we are talking about the integrity of some of our historic neighborhoods, that we're providing for the necessary setbacks, and I wanted to have somebody go on the record with what the definition of... And I wanted to have somebody go on the record with what the definition of that three-to-one ratio is. So, for, when you say three-to-one, for every one foot in height, you have to move back three feet from the property line adjacent to you? Is that what you're saying? Or am I misunderstanding what you're saying?
Mr. Chairman, through you, that, that is correct. It's, it's a three-foot setback for every foot of height.
One foot in height. So, at some point, you've pushed yourself off the site if you're too high, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all saying the same thing. All right. I just wanted to get some clarification on that. And I don't think I heard you say, but it, it applies to everything that we have a current redevelopment district map for, correct?
That is correct. Redevelopment areas one and two.
One and two. Thank you. No more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Roush. Commissioner Salvo?
Yes, okay, I'm a little, just a little confused. Is this just for the redevelopment, redevelopment area or is this for city, plus citywide? A question for staff. I'm sorry. One...
The, the ordinance would affect the R four zoning district citywide.
Okay. And the residential adjacency setback would be, standards would apply regardless if it was within, anywhere within the redevelopment area or in any other portion of the city? And it would apply equally?
That is correct. Residential adjacency applies throughout the city where, where Title nineteen is, is the governing document.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions. Commissioner Roush?
I'm sorry, and one more question. And I, I would have thought you would have thought of this, Commissioner Schlotman, Form Base Code. So, how is it, because we're, you know, we're going through, some areas are now affected by Form Base Code.
It's my understanding it's still, when I, I remember seeing the presentation on Form Base Code, that they still have the residential adjacency. Because I remember talking about that neighborhood that you specifically brought up.
Well, in transects, right? So, you have transects instead of R four. So, I think that, I think the director may have to chime in and say what transects it would apply to, or if it just wouldn't even apply in the case of a Form Base Code. That's where I'm looking for clarification.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, so it's exactly that, Commissioner. The transect zoning is a completely different set of zoning standards. So, this amendment will not affect any of the recently adopted zoning actions for the pilot area, the medical district. Additionally, none of the area along Charleston is currently zoned R four, so none of that will be affected by this. R four is mainly, although not exclusively mainly, in our downtown core area. And so, it will affect those. And again, ideally, in, within the next couple of years, we will transition all of that downtown master plan area to the Form Base Code, which will alleviate a lot of this as a, as an issue going forward.
So, we're still offered the protections, is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, essentially. Okay. Would you like to make a motion, Commissioner Roush?
Sure. So, unless Commissioner DeSalvio, Vice Chair, would, would like to proceed?
Please.
Thank you. Then I will go ahead and make a motion for item number thirty-five, text amendment seven five two eight five. The motion is for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to City Council in ordinance form at a future date.
Thank you. Moving on to item number thirty-six, TXT, seven five two eight six, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on a request to amend LVMC Title nineteen twelve related to crop production use and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this tax amendment would permit the crop production use within the C one and C two zoning districts as a conditional use. The use would be conditioned with the same restrictions as are imposed on the CPV, CM, and M zoning districts, with the majority of the use being required to be located within an enclosed space with limited exceptions. Other cities have begun to allow urban farms and crop production in a wide range of zoning districts to cater to local restaurants and businesses as well as the surrounding community. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. This was notice as a public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to be heard in this item. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Roush?
Very much in favor of urban farms and especially in areas in our, you know, urban downtown core and other adjacency neighborhoods where some of our neighbors are in drought, food drought areas, drought, food, I'm saying this wrong, food desert areas, thank you, where they are underserved by grocery stores and fresh produce many times. So, that said, I have no problem with this, other than I couldn't find in here anywhere how it might relate to marijuana production. Do we have that as an item that is excluded? When you said there were some exclusions from this?
Mr. Chairman, through you, marijuana is permitted as a separate use. So, we've got dispensaries cultivation and production as marijuana uses. So, marijuana is not included as part of this crop production use at all.
So, somebody can't come before us and say, you know, I'm going to now plant marijuana as part of my urban farm because I can, because you didn't say I couldn't? That's, that's not going to become an issue?
That's correct. Because the, like I said, the marijuana uses are completely separate.
Requires a special license, right?
Requires a special use permit for everyone.
Just making sure.
So, so everything else that is federally legal can be grown?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. Hemp. Hemp is now legal. Oregano?
Basil.
Basil? Okay.